Work session to order, and the first item on the agenda is a closed session. So at this time, I will accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute one, three, D dot zero five subdivision three to discuss the purchase or sale of real or personal property. Do I hear such a motion? Motion by Commissioner Carlson, or do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Sumner. Any discussion? All in favor of going into closed session, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're four zero, we will go into closed session. Accept the motion to end the closed session and return to the open meeting. And motion by Commissioner Winger, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carlson, all in favor of returning to the open meeting, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in the open work session meeting. And first item on the agenda is introduction of new employees. Do we have any new employees? Not seeing any? We'll move on to identify future work meeting topics. Anybody have any future work meeting topics to bring up?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sumner?
Um, maybe, I was thinking about, uh, getting an update from the, um, Albanian Drug Task Force. Uh, I recently seen some information about, uh, surveillance system that they are using and participating in, as have some questions on, um, about that initiative and what like, you know, some, some information about, you know, what are, what is the data being used for, uh, you know, the, the, the price of, of, of the system, uh, this, I have a lot of questions.
Sure. Yeah, I, I saw some stuff on social media about that and, and the mayor explained some of that, but I think it'd be good for us to get that out in, in our circle as well, so.
Hard to miss that the other day.
Yeah. Anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I would like to see a joint presentation from HRDC, the Bemidji Area Chamber, and Greater Bemidji on their ideas specifically for expanding the tax base. We need more money, resources, and most importantly, jobs around here lately, so, um, I think that would be in order. If Tom or somebody could reach out to the three of them and see if, you know, ideally a joint presentation, the three of them getting together and maybe Mr. Chair is, uh, the Chair of HRDC could help facilitate that a little bit, uh, but however.
We actually have a couple of HRDC people here tonight, the executive director and that, so they just heard it.
Well, very good.
Great. Anybody else have anything they want to bring forward? Seeing none, we'll move on to the 2024 financial statement review by Clifton Larson Allen, and take it away.
Testing, testing. I think it's working. Cool. All right, well, it is great to be here today. I am Doug Host, the principal on your audit, and I'm, uh, I believe you all have, uh, the thick book of the actual financial statements and the PowerPoint. We're just going through the PowerPoint today. This hits on the high points and, uh, just kinda maybe a forty thousand level look, not getting into this invoice was for this or that. So, uh, just like in years past, we'll go through the PowerPoint and, um, so we audited twelve thirty-one twenty-four, the audit's been done for about six weeks, or no, sorry, it's done six weeks earlier than last year, so I think that, that's really awesome and as you move into budget season, probably pretty good to know where for sure the audited numbers at the end of twenty-four came in. And, but that didn't happen by accident, uh, the staff here at the county worked very hard and diligently to make sure that we were going to come in and be able to do our procedures earlier than in the past and get the audit done and communicate the results to you. So that's why we're here today. So page two on the agenda, we already went through the introduction, we're zooming through this presentation, right? So, uh, there's some required communications I, I just have to go through briefly and talk about our testing of internal controls, single audit, legal compliance, and again, the high level look at the financials. So, um, page five, required communication. So audit standards guide the testing that we do and the reporting that we do, and one of the requirements is we need to communicate to the board, uh, a checklist of things. It's about, okay, what, what's the reason we do an audit? Well, it's to issue an opinion, and we gave you a clean opinion, the best opinion we can give. If we have difficulties in performing the audit or disagreements with management, the audit standards say we have to communicate that to you. Well, happy to report there weren't any of those. Um, we also did a single audit because the county receives and spends more than seven hundred fifty thousand of federal expenditures, we'll touch on the results of that testing in a little bit. But all that communication is summarized in a four-page letter, so it's boilerplate basically from the prior year. So now we're on page seven. The audit standards also require us to look at the county's policies, procedures, and controls that they have in place, and then just communicate the results of that testing. So, um, there is one item we're required to communicate that is called audit adjustments. When we go through and do our testing, um, there's certain Ts to cross, Is to dot that because we deal with, uh, getting the financial amounts into proper buckets all year long, there are just a couple of them where we had to move some things around or bring in some numbers from what Paris sends out or the actuarial study. Nothing major, actually, in comparison to the other audits that I do, the number of tweaks that we gotta make here is definitely on the low end, and you wanna be on the low end, you don't wanna be on the high end, okay? Um, a couple of other items, this one's been around for, I think since the first year we audited the county back in two thousand and three, but segregation of duties. There are some departments that collect money and/or disperse money, and they don't have enough people to fully segregate the responsibility, you know about it, the audit standards just want us to remind you, so you're reminded, okay? The next item is something new that came out this year, um, the county did receive some federal grant money for some road projects. And it's important that, uh, the county receives the reimbursements for federal grants, that's entitled to, and that we report the expenditures related to those programs, sorry. Um, well, we found some of them program, projects, the work was done in October and November, but the reimbursement request for that federal money didn't happen until June, so that's kind of eight, nine month lag, can be significant, it can impact your other federal grants, it can impact your timing of the audit, and so ultimately, we recommend that the county, when you can get reimbursements, you, you shorten that timeline from when you incur the expenditures to when you get reimbursements. I believe there is sort of a new process in place that we'll look at for the twenty-five audit to make sure that that, that window is smaller, but that, that did cause a little trickiness with this year's audit. So page nine, single audit related, no material weaknesses in internal control, that's a good thing.
Hey Doug?
Oh, sure.
On that highway deal, um, did you find that, that the projects were closed out in November, completely done, and, 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 and then it was just until June that, that we asked for the reimbursement, or was there an issue that might've been waiting until spring to finish up to actually complete the project before we asked for reimbursement?
That's a really good question, and I'm getting older, my memory's not so good anymore, but let me think.
I just want to.
I think that was definitely a possibility on one of the two projects.
Okay.
And they were waiting for the last final, I think, but I can't say for sure, but.
Just trying to give Bruce the benefit of the doubt, he's sitting behind you. So, thank you, go ahead and keep on going.
But, uh, all right, let's see, so we test single audit, uh, federal grants, and I know there's tons of acronyms in here, I'll try to spell them out once or twice, but on page nine, there's just two items we're required to communicate, or yeah, to communicate. We do a bunch of testing on medical assistance, MA, and there were some old guidelines in place that expired on like January one of twenty-four, there was like this waiver about not having to do a redetermination for eligibility. Well, January one of twenty-four, that waiver expired, and I think the majority of the counties that I audit, they had great processes in place to do those redeterminations, but they kinda, for a couple, three years with COVID, didn't have to do it anymore, right? So when January one came around. So ultimately, we tested sixty and only found one where it kinda slipped through the cracks, so that's pretty good, but we're required to communicate that one. Um, the other item relates to reviewing case file eligibilities, and this relates to MA TANF and. Um, the other item relates to reviewing case file eligibilities and this relates to MA TANF and SNAP. Medical Assistance, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families and Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. The feds want counties to make sure you got processes in place to make sure that the people that are getting the benefits are eligible. Beltrami County does that through some case file reviews. Sometimes it might be after the fact. And there were a couple being done, just not as many as probably should be. So we just recommend more of those be done. On the bright side, last year we had a couple of these findings.
Sumner's got a question.
So with the, with the reviews of, uh, MA TANF and SNAP and, and with the, uh, I guess anticipation of, of having to review every six months now, are you, do you anticipate that we may have, um, additional, uh, case files that, that.
That need to be reviewed?
Yeah.
You know, I haven't actually contact, contemplated that i- if they do require redeterminations every six months instead of the twelve months now.
And, and.
I suppose conceptually, uh, it probably would increase it some, but not double, I don't think.
And, and would, would that affect our, our audit in any way if, if, uh, if there was more than, uh, what would be considered?
Well, yeah. Um, as far as the case file reviews, uh, I would say it would have to get pretty bad because you're doing some. No, it's just, it probably should be more. So if you weren't doing anything and we told you about it for eight years in a row and you still aren't doing anything, the feds might call you up and say, hey, come on, you gotta get a control in place, right? So, uh, for that part, I don't think so too much. But like, even in that previous finding about, uh, redetermination, the person, the one of sixty that we tested where it didn't happen, was still determined to be eligible. Okay? But if thirty of the sixty that we tested actually were found to not be eligible, the feds are gonna have a big problem. Then, then your, your phone won't just be re, uh, ringing off the hook. They'll be at your front door. Problem.
I think as a state, we've been not good and that's why the situation is what it is in Minnesota.
Yeah.
And not Beltrami County, I think we've been doing a pretty good job, but other areas of the state haven't.
Yep. Very stable.
Yep.
All right. But yeah, we did get to resolve a couple of issues from, that were in last year's audit. So that's good. We're also required, oh boy, also required to, uh, test your, the county's compliance with various state statutes. We did that. There's only one item we're required to communicate, same as last year about publishing of the claims in the newspaper. And I know in our discussions, it's a cost benefit thing. Next, next, uh, page. Unless we got questions on any of that, otherwise we're going to financial results.
Keep on rolling.
All right, cool. So page thirteen is the chart that we've had in the past. This is the three biggies, the General Fund, Road and Bridge, and Health and Human Services. And, um, this chart tells how many months of reserves you got and you went from four point seven, eight months in these three big funds to six point six, so up about one point nine months. Um, many organizations, including the State Auditor's Office, have recommended no less than five months. And for the year, these funds are sitting at six point six, eight. So the county did have an eight point four million dollar decrease in expenditures in twenty-four. Kinda, I, I think at least half of that was related to the Sanford Health Project that happened in twenty-three, but not in twenty-four. So that kinda accounts for the big decrease. But you know what? Fund balance reserves, other than back in twenty twenty, you, you've basically been at just a teeny bit below or a little bit above that recommended minimum. So stable fund balances for Beltrami County. Page fourteen. We look at the total revenues and expenditures of all the governmental funds. For the year, revenues were about nine million more than expenditures. The overall expenditures decreased four point nine million. Again, as a Sanford Health Project. Revenues were up. The primary drivers of the revenues were some additional grants received. The interest revenue was up and, uh, also an increase in taxes. I think twenty twenty-four is probably the first year, the sales and use tax. So we definitely saw an increase in those revenues, which are on slide fifteen. Total revenues here, there was like, uh, four point nine million increase in total taxes. And I, as I mentioned, yeah, sales tax was new in twenty-four. There's a little bump in the levy in twenty-four, which explains that increase. I mentioned the interest was up about one point four million in twenty-four. Definitely better return on investment. And at the end of the year, I think there was about thirty-seven million of unspent bond proceeds that was starting to earn some interest too. So that helps a little bit there. On page sixteen, we look at where the county's expenditures were occurring. Couple items to point out there is on the general government line in the table. That decreased like four point two million. That was, I believe, the Sanford project yet. I was in streets, expenditures were down about eight million, definitely fewer projects in twenty-four. And there were a couple of biggies in twenty-three with, uh, no similar expenses in twenty-four.
Uh, can, can you?
Yep.
Remind me what the Sanford project is because, uh, the, the, yeah, people in the audience or, or in the community might think that's the, the Sanford building. So I just want to make sure that.
That's a really good question. I may need some help from the audience because I just looked at my notes and I wrote it down. Do we remember? Anyone? Sanford Behavioral Health.
Over on, what is it, Hannah Avenue? Yep.
It's been a long day already for me. So, but yeah, good point though. Uh, so the next page is we kinda look at the, the main funds more. Uh, the general fund revenues, Cal. Uh, for the year, general fund fund balance was up six point three million. And the reserves in the general fund are about eleven point five months. So definitely, uh, strong financial position for the general fund. Page eighteen, the Road and Bridge Fund is also very sound financially. Its fund balance increased about five point seven million in the year, but I do want to point out the Road and Bridge Fund, and it's in every county, it's like a roller coaster and it's when the timing of when the reimbursements are received compared to when the projects are paid for. It, it just, it's definitely an up and down thing. As you can see from the chart, uh, it definitely fluctuates from year to year. Page nineteen, the Health and Human Services Fund. This fund historically has been running a little bit thinner than the other funds and for the year, its fund balance decreased to about six hundred thirty-eight thousand. It's got a, just shy of a half a month of reserves and I'm pretty sure we talked about this last year too, but like the Health and Human Services Fund's different because they tend to be getting those reimbursements in every month. Whereas like the general fund, the big chunk of their revenues are taxes. Well, they come in primarily twice a year. So even i- it's definitely a little light yet on the reserves for the Health and Human Services Fund. Next page, forfeited tax fund. The fund balance here increased a little over eighty thousand for the year. Uh, it's very dependent on the amount of sales and forfeitures that occur. For the year, revenues were down. I think there was a four hundred thousand dollar decrease in, in sales and that's related to the timber wall. Timber wall, no, timber sales, which if you don't have any, uh, actual sales, that there won't be any.
Rod money.
Timber. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, but yeah, there wouldn't be any timber sales that occur or not. There'd be less timber sales that occur. All right. Solid Waste Fund, page twenty-one, fund balance was up about six hundred sixty-eight thousand for the year. If you look at the chart, you can see historically the, the revenues have been exceeding the expenditures here, which is building up a pretty solid fund balance reserve. And at the end of twenty-four, it was about six and a third months of reserve. So healthy fund balance level. There, the revenues did decrease. There was less, uh, shingles and tear down type projects that happened from what we, uh, were obtained in the, in in twenty-four. Now in twenty-five, might there be a lot more? Could be with, uh, everything the county's had to deal with here. So with that, page twenty-three, overall, the general fund's fund balance is healthy. Road and Bridge was up one point seven months of reserve. So it's pretty healthy. Health and Human Services Fund is still a little bit low. Solid Waste is, is solid financially and overall fund balance levels were up about one point nine months, uh, for the year. There was a new accounting standard, GET GASBEE one oh one, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board number one oh one. It was just, uh, how the calculation of unused vacation, sick leave, comp time gets reported. Pretty minimal issue for the county. Um, but yeah, your fund balances improved for the year. So financially, pretty solid year for the county. Uh, twenty-five and twenty-six, who knows what's gonna happen? Right? Uh, I've been on, I don't know. I would say it's not an exaggeration that I've been on five different seminars, conference calls, and webinars about the one big beautiful bill and how it impacts us. So I guess we'll see, right?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Or Doug, uh, is that, does that apply to all the counties or are the counties that you work with or are, are you that optimistic?
You know, I've been doing this a long time. I've seen the real estate bubble burst. I've seen, I forget what, some of the other dips in the economy have been. And for thirty-four years, counties have always done a great job of dealing with the, what would you call it? The challenges in front of them and maintaining reserves to sort of weather the storm through some tough economic conditions or changes in financial policy at the federal level. Maybe state mandates from the state level, whatever. Um, so the fact that you're going into twenty-five and you sort of bumped up a little bit on those fund balance reserves, I think that's good. I think a big chunk of that is also tied up in the unspent bond proceeds, but there are some counties that don't quite have the reserves that I think we're seeing here.
Doug, is this, uh, you know, I mean, this is a snapshot in time and you were doing it after we pretty much had just received our first half taxes, which I think we get a little bit more than half on the first half taxes. So doesn't that kinda artificially inflate what our reserves are at that point?
No, because those, those dollars aren't, aren't showing up in this book yet. Uh, we can't really count that.
Okay.
As you reserve.
Oh, because this is the previous year. So.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's looking at the entire, at the end of the year is what it was. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Well, we're, um, about the time. If anybody else has any questions. All right.
All right.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Great work. That moves us on to the Beltrami HRA update. Jeff, uh, or Sandy, whoever's coming up. You got about fifteen minutes, Sandy? Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about, uh, Beltrami HRA. I just talked with the board about, um, calling Tom and asking if I could come and, and talk with you, and then he beat me to it. So, um, he's one step ahead of me. Um, so, um, I have given you, it's hard to talk about Beltrami HRA without talking about Headwaters Regional Development Commission, of which I'm an employee. The Beltrami HRA hires the Headwaters Regional Development Commission to, to staff and kind of provide the oversee and, um, that I have the honor of being the person that actually is able to, uh, work with your board at Beltrami HRA. I've really, um, enjoyed the opportunity to do that. So that is our annual report, um, that we, it's caught off the presses. So, um, there's some really good information in there. We really worked hard to make it a, a tool that you could, um, use. So if you have any questions, um, you can, uh, Kell Larson is here. Um, you can reach out to him later or, um, you can actually talk with me too. So, um, I've also included some things, um, just for your review. Um, because they don't, when you PowerPoint them, they don't always turn out as well as you'd like them to. And I wanted you to have them. Um, I wanted you to have them for, um, there's the. I wanted you to have them for reference. Um, so the mission is to promote and ensure affordable, decent, and quality housing and to enhance community development through the administrative of effective housing programs and redevelopment initiatives in Beltrami County. So that is, um, what Beltrami County Board works on. So I've given you the full layout of Region Two, um, A and Two B in your districts, um, but just wanted to give you some highlights. Um, in Two A, renters are thirty-four percent and homeowners are sixty-six. And cost burn, burden renters are at fifty-seven percent for seniors. So the percentage of cost burden out of a hundred percent, fifty-seven percent of them are seniors. And then cost, um, burdened homeowners of low income is fifty-four percent. So they're pretty, um, in Two A, they're, they're very close to each other. In Two B, renters are, um, eighteen percent and homeowners are eighty-two percent. Cost burden renters are forty-one percent and cost burden homeowners sixty-two percent are low income. So housing developments, um, Headwaters, um, Housing, Headwaters Regional Housing Development, um, Commission and the high school continue to partner and they just recently got a grant, which they were the only outstate, um, high school and HHTC that actually received, um, a grant. So we're very proud of the work um, that the high school and that the Headwaters Commission does for them. Um, the other ones that I've been, um, hearing about and been looking at are the Mitch Radio Development, um, the Whiting Road, there's the Lake Shore Drive, there's pre-sale condos. Um, there's Waldo Road in Kellyer. Um, there's fifty-six duplexes on, um, Red Lake. They're, they're in twenty-eight and twenty-eight. Um, um, Sanford Campus Land is, um, th- thinking about being developed. And then of course, our own Conifer Campus Land as well, which will kind of, I'll talk about later. And then Central School, um, is also one that I didn't put up here. But Central School is also something that is, um, very much usable and, um, kind of on the minds of developers. This is the Conifer Land. Um, so um, it goes from the middle school drive, um, to Conifer Avenue. Um, as you're looking at it, I did put it in your packet because again, sometimes PowerPoints aren't very, um, aren't very good. And so this is the, um, rendering that we just submitted to the state. Um, so this was the beginning of our Con, our Conifer Campus Development. And, um, we had the opportunity to apply to a Greater Minnesota Infrastructure Grant, which is very unique because for many, many year, for all of the years, we've had to work with the cities or we've had to go up against developments in the cities and we just can't score high enough in Greater Minnesota because of the infrastructure that's attached to it, because of transportation, because of all the things that they have that, that we don't necessarily have. So we have been working on the legislature for about seven years to get them to just. So we have been working on the legislature for about seven years to get them to just let us be competitive with people in Greater Minnesota. And this is the first biennium that they've let us do that. So we're super excited that we had that opportunity. So we worked with the city. They committed five hundred thousand with a five hundred thousand dollar match from the state of Minnesota. Beltrami HRA put in one hundred thousand as well. And so along with that, you needed to have a housing development. And one of the things that we had been talking about at, the board had been talking about was, again, workforce development, kind of those Alice, you know, the asset limited. And so we attached a thirty-nine unit apartment to that land, knowing that it would be down the road, but that it needed to, they needed to kind of go in together. You just couldn't build a land, you couldn't put in the land, the road, the infrastructure without a development attached. And we've been working on that development for quite some time. So along with that, on September twentieth, Beltrami County, I do have to say that I've worked with the staff at Beltrami County for many, many years, and they just continue to to just be some of the best people that I've ever had the opportunity to work with. They know their job, they're good at what they do, they're collaborative. And so Ben Heine and Laura Robertson from BiCap and kind of a collaboration, we're putting together a workshop on September twentieth. And one of the things that we were going to do at HRDC is provide rental, we call rent wise. And so we do, we're going to offer that for free to anybody that comes to that, to that seminar. So master planning, we're going to, the board is going to be working on some master planning in January and February with partners. And then December second, we've been working with Nate Dorr on a plan to have a big housing summit on December second to review the housing study with Greater Minnesota Finance and Sanford. And we've been kind of working on some other things there too. The other thing that's exciting for the county is the Connected Communities. Connected Communities is an age-friendly grant that HRDC received from the state of Minnesota. And in the very front page of your packet, you kind of have an outline that talks about some of the goals that we're looking at. They hired HRDC to work on age-friendly housing across the lifespan, universal design, things like that, which kind of goes perfectly with what happens at Beltrami HRA. So we were excited to be able to have that opportunity to do that within our five-region area. So Connected Communities talks about affordable housing in the lifespan, multimodal transportation options, public space for all ages and for all seasons, and some digital engagement. Our goal is that the communities are going to be, will include housing, transportation and public spaces that foster well-being and social connection as we age. We need social connection at any, at any age. And I think we're seeing that as we're, we're doing different kinds of picnics and we're doing how much people want to be together and they really want to be, they want to be in community. So the project activities are we're going to build knowledge about aging and universal design across the lifespan, networking and gathering community input, community education and advocacy, and then strategic partnerships and collaboration. We're hoping that everybody that's doing things separately, we can start to do things together. And then conduct a listening session, focus group, community engagement session, utilize the needs assessment. We do already have a vetted needs assessment, partner with others doing the same work, assistant planning and hosting. We're going to have three strategic housing summits, develop strategies and then create and host educational workshops. Again, I included that in your packet because it didn't turn out really well, but I really wanted to point out that this is the continuum. These are some solutions, but this is the continuum that Minnesota Housing Partnership talks about. So at the top, they talk about the income level, and then it talks about the housing continuum. But it talks, I want to really focus your attention on the strategies. And so in Beltrami County, we do harm reduction and housing first. Our partners do that. Beltrami HRA works with housing, permanent supportive housing. We have, BiCap does transitional housing and rapid rehousing. We do harm reduction again. We're looking at production, low-income tax credits, we have done that. And then if you look down at the green, we're also, we use TIF, we have used TIF to do that.
It's so small, we can't read it. It's so blurry and small.
Yeah, I included it in your packet.
Yeah, that's the same way.
And it's the.
Yeah.
It is small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Well, we include tax increment financing, we do local housing trust fund. Beltrami County did that, and then we have community land trusts. So we're really looking at all of the strategies that Minnesota Housing Partnership says works for building housing. We also have down payment assistance through Beltrami HRA. In two thousand and twenty-four, we helped eighteen families. Brooke Jenkins works with the board on that. We have First Generation Home Buyer, and I did include an article from that on the back. And then we have Small Cities Grant too. And one of the things that that we're also working on is applying for a grant. We've had a three-year grant that has subsidized, that subsidizes the work for Beltrami HRA, and we've just reapplied for another three years of that on Beltrami HRA's behalf to subsidize the work that we do for them through HRA. I think that's everything. Does anybody have any?
Questions for Sandy? Commissioner Sumner?
Chair.
Yeah.
So looking, you write a good letter in your opening, I just want to commend you for that. But I noticed that it said one of the top items moving forward will to be, reach out to other local boards. So I appreciate you coming forward and giving us an update. But I'm also curious, it goes on to say you also reach out to tribal communities. Have you presented to any?
We haven't, no.
Okay.
Well, another part of our team has been working with a tribal, the tribal organization on housing. And I, we have another team member that works on housing that has worked on that. I personally haven't, but other team members have spent time in Menomon, Leech Lake, White Earth and Red Lake, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That looks like it, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
That brings us up to the childcare licensing update. I'm not sure, Jeff, coming forward for that?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Y'all know me, I'm Jeff Lynn, I'm the Social Services Division Director with Beltrami County. With me today, I have Carissa Golden and I have Michelle Voorhees. They are our actual experts, so I'm gonna let them do most of the talking. But before we do that, I'm gonna tell you that Carissa is our supervisor for our intake investigations and licensing unit. We've been doing that for about five years. And then we had to do some advanced math today to try and figure out how many years Michelle has been doing our childcare licensing. And we came up with twenty-eight years she's been providing that service here in Beltrami County. And although I have had some experience as a licenser in the county, I've been away for a long time. So I am not the expert, I'm gonna let these guys do the speaking, and I might chime in here or there. If you have questions as we go, please feel free to ask away, so.
Thank you, Jeff. I should note that Michelle has been doing licensing for twenty-eight years, but she has been a social worker with Beltrami County longer than that. She's our most veteran social worker, so I'm very proud to have her on my team.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And I understand that, I think it was Commissioner Sumner that asked for a brief update on how childcare licensing is going.
Yeah, well, you know, childcare licensing, how we are, you know, trying to recruit people, how the licensing, you know, I know we, we're, we need childcare. And I'm wondering, you know, where we're at in the county with trying to provide these licensing, the childcare daycares, things like that, just kind of a brief update. And then, you know, I know that you guys are separate from the childcare centers and how, you know, how do you guys, you know, work together? Are there things that we can do to work together to maybe improve some laws or some policies and regulations to, you know, provide a better service for, for our, you know, folks that, you know, rely on childcare?
We'll try to answer some of that.
I know there's a slide in here that actually talks about what you don't do, and some of those things you just mentioned are some of those things that they don't do. But we've got about ten minutes or so, if we can try to hustle through it, that'd be great.
Is this the clicker to move forward? Sorry. Okay, what we do do, we act as the Commissioner of the State under Department of Children, Youth and Families through the state of Minnesota. We recruit, train and retain family licensed childcare programs. I do want to take a minute to say that at this point in time, we are mainly, or we have mainly relied on the state of Minnesota for the recruiting of daycare providers. They are putting efforts into that right now. In the past, we have done more with ads in the paper and that type of thing. We have gone away from that, but that is something that we can get back to. We did determine that it did not, it wasn't fruitful to do that in the past. We do licensing visits for the initial visits to determine whether a home and a provider meets the qualifications. We do annual visits to relicense or keep that license going, and then we, which are always unannounced. And then we also do the monitor checks. Some of those have to do if we get complaints or reports about daycare providers. Michelle goes out and checks and investigates those reports, which leads us to the next one. We investigate reports, and then we make recommendations to the state of what should happen based on the results of that investigation. And we initiate background studies. The state of Minnesota does the actual background study, but Michelle does the work to get that moving along and get the fingerprints of the people that are interested in doing childcare and our current childcare providers. There we go. What we don't do, we don't make up the rules. I wish that we could do that. The rules for childcare providers have increased over the years, which I think is a contributing factor to less people being interested in providing that service. Right now, Michelle has a list of two hundred and sixty-eight items that she has to check on, not only at the time of licensing, but also each year. There are seventeen categories in that checklist. We don't make final decisions on negative actions. So if there's been a report of something happening in a daycare, we investigate, we make recommendations to the state, whether that be nothing, if we didn't find anything, a fine, a conditional license or taking the license away. But it's the state that makes that final decision. We also don't make the final decisions on the background studies. Anybody who lives or works in a daycare, a home or a place where daycare is being provided, thirteen and older have to do that background study. So for instance, if maybe the female in the home is wanting to do the childcare and the person they're married to had something on their record from fifteen years ago, that might stop somebody from being able to have childcare in their home. We do not license daycare centers, but I think an interesting piece of information is we have places in our community that look like daycare centers that we do license, and those are called special child, especially fam, special family childcare. For instance, St. Phillips has three, three rooms of childcare. And those look like a center, but actually Michelle licenses those, and they fall under different rules than the centers do. We have some other ones in town also. We do not, but we don't license the actual daycare centers who have different rules. They have to have some licensed teachers, their adult-to-child ratio is different than our childcare, the childcare facilities we license. We don't work with unlicensed providers, but we do need to respond if we hear that there's unlicensed providers out there that aren't following the regulations of doing so. And we don't develop business plans for providers, nor do we offer advice on running small businesses. I think that is another thing that really stops some people from having childcare in their home. They might really love little children and like working with them, but running a business might be something they're either not interested in or that scares them away. The licensing process, there's inquiry packets that Michelle sends out to people who are interested. She meets with those people and hopefully together they decide that that's something that the person wants to move forward with. And then I'll let Michelle talk about the next steps if they are interested.
Right, then they apply, process the application, references, background studies. They have to get training, sometimes we need a fire marshal. And then I do like an initial home visit to see where they're at. I leave them with a to-do list, and then I will go back once, maybe twice, to see if they're all ready up to snuff. And that's where the two hundred and sixty-eight question checklist comes in, and we go through everything from safety to training to many things that we talk about. So the licensing process can take, you know, thirty up to a hundred and twenty days, depending on what we wait for. Sometimes people aren't ready, or they need toys, equipment, or we wait for the fire marshal, or sometimes we wait for background studies to clear, but.
And then we're not gonna go over this, but it's just a list of the statutes and the rules that we must follow when we're licensing childcare providers. Very, I think we talked about a few of those. I think a huge one also is those initial startup costs. The amount of toys and equipment it takes to be licensed for childcare is quite a bit. So for somebody to put that initial investment in is sometimes difficult. The background checks can be an issue, as we talked about, meeting the licensing requirements. As I said, those requirements continue to increase. We just, in the last year, had a proposal of the new requirements, and they, they were very, very strict. Things like even the outside play areas for childcare centers or home childcare had to have certain material underneath all of the play equipment. It's not what we want for most of our kids in northern Minnesota. And if parents do want that, some. And if parents do want that, some of the centers do offer those things. I think that there was enough pushback that the state pulled that back and they're reconsidering and, and then are now working on something to move forward with, which we were really happy to see because I think some of our current providers would have shut down. And learning how to operate a small business. Many of us know that is very complicated and couldn't be overwhelming.
Just want to add, you know, the, the small business piece, when you think about it, the days of someone who just loves children and wants to take care of them and offer that service, those days are kind of gone. Because people really do have to develop full business plans. They have to understand the taxes and how they work. And they want a person, if they decide they want to do it, the fire marshal has to come out, the windows all have to be all the right size, all these different things that have to play into that. All of them can be barriers to somebody starting this small business. And it is a complex small business. It's not, it's not just that's the old time grandma who wanted to take care of kids anymore. It's a lot more than that. And I think that's one of the biggest challenges that our, our individuals who want to provide the service run into, so.
And then the other things, like when my kids were in sports, I had the luxury of oftentimes being able to leave work to go watch them compete. That is very difficult if you're running a daycare out of your home. And, you know, having your employer pay part of your insurance. There's just the wear and tear on your home. Your sheet rock is getting ruined, stuff like that. So we have a list of barriers. I do want to say for people who have a heart for kids, it can be very rewarding too. And I'm glad that there are people that are willing to do the work to make this happen for our community. So where we're at, we currently have 76 licensed programs. Last year we had 80 and the year before that 78. That kind of makes it looks like we're kind of stable right now, which unfortunately we're stable at those numbers. But I want to point out that in 2003, we had 135 licensed providers in our county. From 1997 to 2017, we never dipped below 100 licensed providers. So we are far from that. And that's not unique to Beltrami County, that's nationwide right now. We have 866 total slots for children. When we think about the number of workers and families we have in Beltrami County, we can see that there is an issue. And out of those, there's at max 132 infant slots, but we have some providers choosing not to have infants in their home. Instead, are filling a month of older children. Right now, Michelle is working on developing three new programs. And right now, nobody has let her know that they're going to be closing soon. Why don't you take the summary?
All right, summary, nationwide trend in decline of family childcare license holders. And it started about two, year 2000. There are many rules and regulations to follow, as you saw by the eight different rules and regulations we have. And it is expensive. I don't make them have a ton of toys to start, they have to have some. But when you're doing your smoke detection, carbon, monoxide, fire extinguisher, just basic cribs, high chairs, that kind of thing, it does get expensive. There are grants and things out there available to providers, so that does really help. And maintaining your home to licensing standard adds up. She mentioned your sheet rock, or your toilet gets plugged, or whatever. There's so many things that can go wrong. But, you know, I think you really have to have a heart for this and you have to really want to do it. And we, we try to make it easy, even though there's 268 questions.
I also just want to say, although it sounds like it, we're talking about the barriers, it is also a, a job that people have that they love. They love these kids, they get to see them grow in their homes. They get to know that when they're seniors and they're graduating, they had a part in, in helping them get there. I can imagine that as a, as a licensed provider, a person looks, can, you look at all the kids that come through your home and you see them playing football and wrestling and, and doing all the different sports and activities that are available in our community. And it gives you a reason to go to those sports, to see those things. And because you have relationships with these kids and again, you help them get where they're at. So although we talk about the challenges, I want to encourage anybody out there who has any interest in, in learning more and visiting with Michelle. And it's, it's a very rewarding job for those that do it. And there are some financial positives. I mean, you don't do a job for no reason, right? You need to, need to earn some, some money doing it and there are opportunities for that as well. So I would really encourage anybody who's ever had any thoughts or interest in, in providing daycare in our community and helping support the individuals who are working and, and helping these kids grow into the people we want them to be, that they contact Michelle and Beltrami County Health and Services.
Thank you. Commissioner Sumner?
I'll try to be brief here. So is, is there still a huge need for childcare in Beltrami County?
I feel the need still is with infant care. Many of my providers have openings for toddler and preschool because many of the schools around or the other programs offer free preschool. So some of those are not going to daycare. So I feel the need still is for infant care.
So the, the county doesn't have any responsibility of trying to provide assistance to fill those needs because I, I think that if you don't have childcare, you don't have people going to work. And if you don't got people going to work, you got people applying for SNAP and MFP and, and things like that, you know, so it's a, it's a cycle. And childcare transportation, housing are all part of that cycle. And if we're not addressing the childcare needs, there, there's.
I would, I would suggest that there's always going to be need for more, more providers. If you.
So how, how can we get those providers?
Right.
You know, it's, it's what I, I would like to, you know, try to find out and know because, you know, I know down in Stevens County, they provided some funding from the county. Maybe a tri-county effort where they, where they built, you know? And is that something we can't do or what, what's the barrier to that? You know, I.
There, there are grants available, as Michelle had mentioned, through the state of Minnesota, and I'm thankful for those. So that is one way that people who are interested in this but need some help, they can apply for those grants and whether they get them or not is up to a committee of people.
With, I think with most licensing, what you find is word of mouth is, is really where, where we find people coming forward, whether it's child foster care or whether it's childcare. It's those people that are doing it and talking about the benefits that they receive by providing that service, talking to their friends and neighbors and relatives. That's really where I think most of the, of the, most of our providers come from. They've seen it, they've experienced it. And, and sometimes it's people that are, have, have their own children at home and they want to be able to provide for their own children. And then while they're doing it, they want to earn some money caring for other people's children as well.
But thank you for, for coming. You know, I don't want to question the experts, I just want to learn and, and do my part and, and trying to provide, you know, some, some solutions to, you know, the childcare. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, I just wanted you to know that I've had a number of conversations with local daycare providers. We had one at the VOTEC school and I had another one at, another conversation. And I just want you to know how, how highly regarded you are in what you do. And, and they, everybody says, I don't know, I don't know what the county do if Michelle ever retires. So I wanted you to know, think that you, that you're held in high regard. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto that. Thank you very much for the presentation, we appreciate it. Yep. All right, that moves us on to the dust control on county roads. And Bruce is gonna give us some options here, hopefully.
Yeah, first, a little bit of information. Beltrami County, we put dust control on roughly about 150 miles. We spend just about $650,000 on those 150 miles. So this is a significant amount of money that we spend. However, it's a cost savings for us. Dust control for us is not worrying about the dust that people are complaining about, but the dust, trying to keep it in the road itself. Keeping the dust in the road means less regraveling, less maintenance, less labor and equipment out there on the roads. And so it's a cost savings for us to, to use the dust control. Calcium chloride, I'll use calcium chloride as the common dust control product. You do use magnesium chloride sometimes when it's cheaper. This year we use magnesium, but most normally we're using calcium chloride for our dust control product. Calcium chloride is the most common dust control product across, that is used across the nation. Not just Beltrami County, Minnesota, but across the nation. Calcium chloride is the number one product used. And it's because it's most effective and cost effective for, for agencies to use. However, to make that case, I, I did provide a document in the packet there, the case for calcium chloride, kind of outlines those points of keeping the dust in the road, keeping the, the road firm, not having to regravel, less maintenance. And so kind of making the case of it. But chloride, calcium chloride is a chloride, and chlorides are corrosive. It is just like road salt in the winter time, the calcium chloride in the summertime also is corrosive. It's a known issue. The concerns that we hear from the public is about the corrosiveness or the environmental concerns that come from calcium chloride. I provided another document in the, the packet there, the best practices. If you look close, you would actually see my name in that packet. I was the chair of the committee that oversaw this project. Years ago, I had actually been on the Local Road Research Board. The Local Research Board is made up of county engineers and city engineers. They give allocation of money to, to put towards research on, that are local issues. Part of the Local Research Board is a research information, implementation committee. And that's who did this work here. There wasn't actually, no actually new research done with this project. It was just implementing research that's been out there, gathering information and putting it together. And this was in response to questions that I was receiving, but also other county engineers were receiving about the using, you know, calcium chloride for dust control, the corrosiveness, the environmental issues, the different questions that we were receiving out there. And so again, no new research was done, but putting information together to help answer those questions. So on the corrosiveness, if you look at page nine in that document, there's a pie chart. That pie chart shows how much chloride is used across the state of Minnesota. Because this, again, it's been looked at and researched a lot, but across Minnesota, the majority of the chlorides are from road salt in the winter time. Forty-two percent of the chlorides across the state are, are used in the winter time. Dust control is a very small sliver, it's 1%. And so, I mean, just looking at those numbers, there are 42 times more chlorides across the state in the winter time than, than there is what is, we're using in the summertime. Beltrami County numbers ourselves, just the county, we can do the math. It is just the county itself is six times, we put six times more chlorides down in the winter time than the summertime. And that's not taken into account, I don't have the numbers from MinDOT or townships, what they're putting down, but just county on county roads, we're putting down six times more chlorides in the winter time. So there is a lot more chlorides being put down in the winter time. So one of the concerns we hear is it's the calcium chloride that's rusting my cars. Well, it's not just, I mean, I'm not going to say it doesn't. It's definitely a fact that it does, but there are a lot more, again, chlorides being put down in the winter time. On the health side, environmental side, on page eight, it kind of, kind of answers that question, helps answer that question. Again, there are a lot of studies that have been done out there on the environmental concerns. The one is, you know, in there, the Department of Ag, US Department of Ag, went out there and looked along road sides that had calcium chloride use. And there was no concerns about, you know, off the roadside of the, the level of, of the chloride that was there. The big thing is chlorides are safe to use if they're used properly. Use the right amount, the, the right solution, handled properly, everything, then it's not a concern. In Beltrami County, we've actually gone further with trying to limit our use of chlorides. Instead of putting down, a lot of counties, most counties will put down one application a summer. A full rate, they'll put down once a summer to help with our concerns is we split that rate in half and put it down twice a summer. And so we're not doing a heavy dose, we're doing two lighter doses. So we are trying to do some things to, again, to help alleviate these concerns and follow the, you know, best standard practices or even better than the best practices. But there's still concerns. There are individuals and townships, you received a letter from a, a bunch of townships with the concerns about the corrosiveness and, and health concerns. So what do we do? For us, the, again, the dust control is cost effective, it's proven. It helps us maintain our county roads. But there are individuals and townships, local stakeholders that have a concern with its use. So the last document that I gave you is some options to consider. There are some options. One of the questions that we get, you know, from a township is what, what can we do? What are our options? Can we, can we, you know, go to the county board? Or can we, what can we do to just get the use of chlorides to stop? So we haven't had anything in place before, but here are some options that the board can consider. And there's the range of them from do nothing, continue as we are, all the way to turn the road over to the, to the township. So addressing the concerns from using chloride, that is kind of the level that you would start at is the township could take over the road. They don't like the chloride use on that road. It can become a township road and they can maintain it and do whatever they'd like with that road. So that's one option. At the far end is the township takes full ownership of that road. The next level down would be the township could maintain the road. It would still be a county road, but a township could maintain it. That would take a pretty aggressive agreement with them to make sure that they're maintaining it and continue to maintain it to our standards. And what happens at the end? You know, if they stop putting chloride on there, at some point it's going to have to have regravel, you know, more gravel put on it. Can't have a township turn it back to us at that point. You know, it's going to have to have some type of maintenance in that agreement to make sure that that road is being maintained. And if they stop, it's at a, at the same condition that we gave it over. Another option would be the township could pay for the additional costs. So we stop putting chloride on there, but there's going to be additional cost to the county to, to regravel, blade it more often. And so we could have a cost per mile that the township would pay that, to have the no chloride use on that road. The fourth option for a township would be they could pay the additional cost for a, a different product. There are non-chloride products out there, however, they're not as effective and they cost more. And so there is a, would be additional cost to use a non-chloride type of product. And so the township could pay that increase in cost. The chloride costs 5,000 and the product, different product costs 10, you know, they could pay the 5,000 per, per mile to use that alternative product. Those would be costs to the township. Or the county could go to increasing its own costs. We're going to start using some alternative products and pay for it on the county dime. Or we could say, nope, we're going to stop using chlorides and we're going to have the increased cost. And again, that'd be a increased cost to the highway department, budget wise, for increased maintenance, increased gravel use, increased equipment. Um, lastly, last option is continue as we are. Um, we are trying to do the best, uh, maintaining our roads, using the dust control in the best manner uh on the roads that need it, um, to help reduce our costs, be most efficient with it. And so I I guess there, there's a wide variety of options there for you, um, for you to consider and discuss.
Yeah, for for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Summer.
Uh, Bruce, uh, thank you for for putting this uh presentation together and and uh I I received uh some communications from the townships uh uh over the past couple of months, and and I thought it was important that uh that we brought this forward to, you know, discuss this and and see what our options are. Um, Mr. Chair, I think a couple of years ago in the past, I'm I was trying to think of how, you know, we can get uh, information from townships and and try to uh, figure out a solution, uh, because I understand, you know, the importance of, uh, you know, the dust control and and its cost savings for the county, and that's what, you know, we try to do, uh, save the mon- uh, save the county money. And oftentimes, uh, well, for me, uh, one of the the issues that I I hear is is, you know, our roads. Uh, be- maybe because a lot of, a lot of the county roads are in my district. So I think it's important that we try to, you know, listen to both sides. Um, and and it's difficult for me because, you know, I I have townships that that, you know, love the the dust control, the calcium chloride, but I have also have townships that that, you know, don't like it. So, you know, trying to find that that happy medium, you know, is difficult. And if I can make a suggestion, um, and I know we we've done in the past is we went out to, you know, the townships, had a meeting, you know, at the township, you know, county board meeting. Uh, and if townships had any questions or concerns, you know, they can, you know, address the board there because uh, unless we ate, we ask, you know, the town, a township representative to, you know, speak to us. I'm not, I'm not too sure, I'm trying to figure out how we can find a a solution to, um, you know, because I I wouldn't wanna make any type of of action without hearing, you know, from, you know, the township, you know. Now that they have, you know, some options are, you know, we were presented with some proposals, you know. And then, should we turn it over to the townships for full responsibility? You know, I don't know.
I agree with you, Commissioner Summer, that I, now that we have have presented some options, for one, I wanted to give our townships options. Um, and not just say, take it or leave it, you have to have to just accept that we're gonna calcium chloride, give them some options. And I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the townships, what what options are they? You know, are they all focused on on one that they feel is is reasonable, or or are they all across the boards? And do you know, do we as a as a county just say that any of these options are okay? And we get, and we direct Bruce to to, you know, just work with any individual townships to do whichever option they choose? Or do we say that we're only gonna allow option four, which is if they wanna do something different than in fairness to the other townships, that they pay the difference, you know, um, to what they wanna do? I I don't, I don't know what that answer is, but I would be inclined to to say that it would be fine. Um, at first glance, I mean, my I my initial thought would be what I just said, is that if the townships wanna do something different, then as long as they're okay with paying that incremental difference, if it's five hundred bucks or thirty-five hundred bucks or whatever, um, then they, you know, they should be allowed to do that. Um, but maybe there are some of them that that, um, we come to a mutual agreement, our, uh, Bruce uh agrees with the township board, and they want to take over the entire road, but, you know, I I think it, uh, I'd be okay with with any of the options of um, that are okay with our our highway engineer and the and the township. Anybody else have anything they would like to add?
Um, just that I think it's nice that we have some options here, so I don't see why we can't figure out at least a compromise, meet in the middle somewhere. I think maybe a temporary working group with Bruce, two commissioners, a bunch of township officials. Um, have a couple of meetings, figure out the pros and cons of each of these options, bring it back to us. Um, I think we gotta get all the key stakeholders together and and meet a few times and go over these options.
Bruce or Tom, do you have any suggestion on how we would would be, have like a public hearing on it or something to to get public input? And we normally, like in this type of an environment, we don't, you know, we don't have a public input on a work session topic like this. So I appreciate all those that are here, and I see some familiar faces in the audience here that are interested in this topic. And and I just wanna, you know, bring forth some, so we're moving the this forward, obviously, this year it's kind of a moot point probably, but uh for the, you know, so we get something accomplished for next year, for sure.
I could jump in.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Um, I do think, like you said, Commissioner Gosfig, that it's a menu, you allow the townships to choose. If there was one, I would say scratch off, it would be number two. Um, cause that's gonna be the most complicated far as coming up with agreement to make sure that township is maintaining our road to our conditions when we're done. Um, so, you know, I might shy away from that one. Um, but all of the other ones, I I think you do leave it as a menu of an option for those townships. And each township might have a different idea or a different situation, you know, uh, one road they might have interest in and and the rest of the townships don't have any interest in, but there might be a road out there that a township might wanna take over. But I do think, again, there are different products out there, and they're coming, they're new products all the time. And so one, one year, you know, it might be the main tane and and future year, it might be that they wanna use a different product on there. So I I do think maybe allowing or keeping all the different options out there uh as an as an option for the townships. The the work on my part or the county's part is coming up with that agreement, um, putting something in place and having a uh, here's some list of products and costs, and, you know, I I did look up and reach out for a few. But again, there there are a lot of different things out there and but, um, so I think if the board is open to the options, then it's just, it's more work on our part to kind of come forward um, with some more details and 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 I, you know, uh, something to hand over to the township to, hey, here's our, here's our policy, here's the options, here's, um, here's what, you know, it's up for you to take it from there, I guess, is my, in my opinion, but uh.
Commissioner Carlson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, I just wanna echo, I think it'd be great to have options. I'm any, rather than us acting like the state and giving the counties all these mandates and all that crap that we have to put up with, I I like the idea of having the townships have options, and then they can make that decision. Um, and then we would have to have some costs, show what the cost would be, and and so they know the full extent of everything. But, um, I I think that would be best.
Yeah, and anybody opposed to to just letting Bruce work with the townships, uh, with the options uh, that were presented tonight except for option two? Yeah, Commissioner Winger?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, I just have one thing, and just to make sure this is going to be separate for each township, correct? This is not gonna be across the board, okay?
Right, yeah, that's the way, that's the way I would see this, is it's not a one size fits all. If, you know, Hornet Township wants to do it this way, and Taylor Township wants to do it a different way, let them choose which way they wanna do it. And and, uh, you know, some townships may elect us to leave it, and other townships may choose that they wanna try a new product. Depends on how how um, how much they, you know, would like to potentially spend on it. So if everybody's in agreement, then let's just give give Bruce the head knot to to work with with options that, with the exception of number two, the options that you presented.
Yeah, I would bring some type of, again, policy, a little more policy document, and uh, that the county board can approve with the options and.
Tom, you have something that you wanna add?
Well, I mean, I I think when you asked me the question earlier, if you should have a public hearing and do all that stuff, that's only if you wanna make things uniform, right? Then, if you're gonna standardize something, then get everybody's input and make one single standard. But it doesn't sound like the board wants to go that way, and I think the option that you've chosen by allowing Bruce to negotiate directly with the townships is perfect. Uh, one of the things I would caution the board about is having too many options. Because the more options we offer, the more expensive it gets for us, and for the township for that matter, especially for passing on cost to the townships. For example, if you say we're not gonna, you know, you can, you can choose something else other than calcium chloride, and they choose, you know, some other type of product, like, you know, one township chooses this product, another township chooses that product, another township chooses this product, another township chooses another product, we may have four different products with four different storage requirements, different um SDSs, different protocols, different time requirements, I mean, i- this could get out of hand. So I just caution you that there needs to probably be some parameters around how many options you would like to offer.
I think that's gonna be up to Bruce to, you know, to to rein that in and and, you know, um, hopefully work with the townships to be reasonable about how many different options we have and not trying everything under the sun necessarily.
Right.
So, okay?
One thing I thought of, and this is more from the township side, you know, we're doing X amount of gallons of chloride. And the township says, well, we don't want it on this road, we're gonna pay for this different product. Um, you know, one of our, we get requests for, we want dust control on all these other different roads. You know, I I don't think we should just go put it on another road in that township. And so we're, you know, we're still putting down the same amount of chloride in that township.
We'll take it up in Port Town in in Washville.
There, there are other roads and other places that need it, but, I mean, again, from the town township standpoint, you stop it on this road, and you can just go put it on another road, you know, so there's also gotta be some parameters to keep us, the county, kinda, I don't wanna say in check, but, you know, so that we're.
Well, the equipment that we use too, if you've got calcium chloride in a vehicle that you're using for a certain roadway, now you've got to drain that out, or use it all up, go back, put a different, with different, um, uh, solution into a different vehicle, I mean, there's those types of things to just consider too. So it's not quite as easy as, hey, pick whatever you want, and let's just get to it, we don't have the storage and we don't have the spreading equipment.
It could be a situation where if they want some odd new thing to try, that they, we might have to have them contract that out to some some other company to to do that and coordinate with Bruce as far as the application timeframe to make sure the road is prepped. Um, but uh, I think that we're in, we're in agreement that we'll let let Bruce uh get something fleshed out here and talk to the townships and and the townships that are here tonight, um, are hearing this, so they should be able to to get together with Bruce on, um, give him their input on what they think of it and go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. We'll move on. And so we got Woodland Property Pace Resolution.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, before you have an application and a request, as well as a resolution, uh, to facilitate a financing mechanism that the county board has agreed by joint powers agreement uh back in two thousand sixteen to facilitate on behalf of the Minnesota Pace Program. So, uh, this is only the third application or request that we've received since the year two thousand sixteen, when the county decided to participate in the program. So I thought maybe a refresher on the program and its benefits and what it does uh might be in order. So, um, the Minnesota Pace Program essentially is a is a com- a benefit to commercial property owners that voluntarily participate in the program uh in order to make their business more energy efficient, essentially. Uh, the program does allow for one hundred percent financing of um those energy efficiency improvements, um, including both uh hard costs and soft costs, uh, and the costs themselves are rolled in to the property tax assessment as a special assessment. So essentially, there's really no cost to the county here uh for the program, other than the administrative cost that comes with, you know, facilitating uh, the the placement of the special collection and the collection, or the special assessment, rather, and the collection of that assessment and remittance to, um, the St. Paul Port Authority. What's really kind of weird here is that the St. Paul Port Authority has been the agency statewide that is uh essentially managing or administering this. And um, sort of, you wonder why is it that organization is doing this work? I'm I'm not really sure, I know the answer to that, other than to say they are a state designated uh facilitator of the program on behalf of the state. So essentially, the uh St. Paul Port Authority collects these applications on behalf of the counties and the cities. Uh, they review the applications, they they work up the uh scenarios uh and the financing mechanisms with the property owners. They get everything in order, they package it up, and then they send it to the jurisdiction that that particular property owner uh resides in, or their business is is located in. Uh, in this particular case, we have an application from Woodland Property LLP. Um, and uh, like I say, this is only the third one, and since two thousand sixteen, almost ten years that we've received. Um, the information in regard to the details of the application uh and the financing are included in your packet. I won't go through all those details, other than to say that uh the assessment amount is about close to sixty-two thousand dollars. The assessment start date is contemplated on June first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, it's amortized over twenty-year time period, and the interest rate that's been negotiated is five point five percent. Um, essentially, the county doesn't get anything for doing this, other than, you know, energy efficiency improvements that promote businesses, uh, uh, you know, utilization of energy efficiency and that sort of stuff. Um, the program benefits to the cap- to the commercial property owners, you know, they're investing in these projects essentially upfront at zero cost. And they're paying overtime uh for those improvements as a special assessment onto their tax roll. Um, typically, uh, the St. Paul Port Authority and the program will suggest that, um, the utility savings that come by making the improvements uh eventually outweigh the cost of the improvements themselves. So there's a perceived benefit there, uh, potentially a real benefit to some commercial property, um, owners as well. Uh, so essentially, all the county has to do is is um make the presentation, present the package in a resolution format, which is what you have in your packet, uh, and then if the county board authorizes it through resolution, which is on the consent agenda for this afternoon, uh, then essentially, all we do is we direct the county auditor treasurer to place the special assessment onto the property. We send them the information right back to St. Paul Port Authority, and they go ahead and process everything. And then the special assessment gets tacked on, and eventually we just collect, and then we remit on behalf of the Port Authority. Uh, as I say, you know, other than the the small amount of administrative uh activity that we have associated with, you know, there's really not a burden to the county, um, and there's a benefit certainly to property owners. So, uh, that's a little bit about the program, and just a very little bit about, um, the application. And go into any details, um, about the application itself, it is a voluntary program. So, you know, this is something that the applicant has brought to um, the state of Minnesota and the Pace Program. So it's it's nothing that we're going after, and we're not soliciting uh these types of projects, we're not soliciting property owners, we're not just, you know, voluntarily, um, placing special assessments on people's properties, this is a program that the property owner initiates. And so, uh, so this is, and and there is an application that has their signature on it, uh, that's been notarized, that attests that they do want the special assessment for the reasons that we've just talked about. So, uh, that's in your packet for consideration, uh, resolution form on the consent agenda, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Yeah, Tom, that since this is in the city limits of Amidji, how how does the city play into it, or don't they somehow play into it, even though it's on the city limits?
Yeah, my guess is that the city does not have a joint powers agreement with the state to, for this particular program. And so because the county does, they just, you know, having the county remit it. Um, so I I don't know that for sure, but I believe that's probably what's happened, because it is in the city limits. They did have a joint powers agreement, it would make more sense for them to do it, because they assess properties as well.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, it, uh, so we aren't, are are we, or are we not fronting the money for this project?
We do not, actually, the Port Authority fronts the money, they have three different sources that they use. Um, there's the Trillion BTU loan program, the local credit unions sometimes will also sponsor this. Or they have a national funding sources, a variety of national funding sources. And so the St. Paul Authority is actually grabbing the money, they're financing it, and then they're paying themselves back through this special collection. We're just sort of helping administer that.
Facilitators of it.
That's it, there's no cost to us.
Okay, yeah, yeah, other than a little administrative cost that we're eating, but uh, all in all, not uh, not much.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions on this? No, you wanna hop into your administrator's report then?
Thank you, Mel. I have to give that to you from over here, cause it's on my computer, I apologize, I didn't print it out today, um.
Okay, so I, just a brief update for you, it's been kind of a busy week so far, it's only Tuesday. But, um, as you know, our human resources director has given her notice. Uh, so it's sad that we're, you know, gonna, she's gonna leave the organization, but she's given us thirty days, which is great. Um, we did open the position last uh week, and so it's only been open for just a few days, we've already received nine applications, which is great. Uh, I haven't gone through those applications, I can't tell you, you know, what the caliber of the the candidates are at this point in time. But, uh, we are leaving the position open for three, we're actually, it's gonna stay open until filled. But, um, we will uh do a first review in essentially three weeks from last week, so another two and a half weeks or so. Um, so, uh, in addition, we're working on a transition plan, uh, with some internal staff that'll allow us to essentially bridge the time period where, um, our HR director.
That will allow us to essentially bridge the time period where our HR director, you know, will vacate the position. And the time until our new HR director, you know, takes the position, so we're working on that transition plan right now. And so more to come on that, I guess, in, in the future here, as we move through the remainder of the month. Just update on the jail project, there's, you know, obviously two components to this, the new jail and the old jail. The new jail is proceeding very nicely, precast walls are all installed on area A, which is the southwest corner. And also the precast contractors also set the panels in the gym area. So now you can see sort of the differences in elevation and such too. And then detailing and grouting is also taking place currently. And now they've moved the crane and they're moving to work on set, setting panels in area B, which is northwest section there. The steel folks are going to be on site as well, so they're going to be erecting steel on site and setting skylight steels and, and other sorts of. Steel supports, the plumbers are starting the shallow plumbing in the west bay of area A, the southwest corner. Everything at this point in time is on schedule and on budget, love to say that every time I give an update, especially on a capital construction project of this size and complexity. I'm hopeful that we can say that every single time we give you the update. Any event, some exciting news will be also presented with a full update on August nineteenth. So our next board meeting, because that's where we'll share the finalized designs and cost estimates. For the three scenarios that we've studied for what to do with the old jail, right? And just a reminder, you know, there's a full rehab option, a partial rehab with a partial tear down option. And then certainly a full tear down option, each of those options does require some adjustment to the Sallyport, as we've talked about in the past. Anyway, all of those options will be provided along with cost, high level cost estimates. We're not anticipating that the board needs to make a decision at that evening, it's just information we're going to give to you. And then we'll probably even ask that you take a month or so to, to talk with constituents, look at the information. You may even want to collect some public comments from the community members or others to help you deliberate on, you know, which option you'd like to choose. But at some point, before the end of this year and hopefully in the not-too-distant future. We will ask for some direction in regards to a formalized decision. So that we can then begin to work on the architectural design for whatever option is that you, we, you choose. Budget Committee started its work today, we had a good meeting, met, I don't know how many folks we had come through the, the conference room today. Probably dozen or so or fourteen, something like that. Lot of good dialogue, lot of good information and exceptional work so far by the, by the department heads, in my opinion. The Budget Committee will continue its work tomorrow and then for three more days, potentially the following week. We're hopeful that we may not need those three days, but we'll just have to see sort of how things go. And, and what, what level of effort we still have ahead of us in regard to kind of getting. A good recommendation for the, for the county board. So as I mentioned before, the, the starting preliminary levy is, is close to thirteen and a half percent right now. And that's after quite a bit of work to get it down from what was initially around a sixteen percent levy. So as I mentioned to the Budget Committee today, you know, we have enjoyed days where, or years, I should say. Where we've had a preliminary levy that the staff, you know, when they put their budgets together, we had this really high number. That was, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen percent. And then administratively, behind the scenes, we worked that down to like eleven or twelve percent. Then we go into the Budget Committee and then it gets whittled down to, you know, eight, six, five percent, whatever it is. Those big swings are not really easy to achieve any longer. Because we have been in a cost-cutting mode for years. And, you know, it's, it's, it's getting more, there's really no more low-hanging fruit, if you will. There are things we can do to reduce the budget, but they're going to have service level, they're going to have staff impacts, they're going to have program impacts. They're going to have state mandate impacts, I mean, that's where it gets difficult. And I think that's where the work of the Budget Committee, probably this year and into the several next future years, is going to, is going to be really tough. But we are confident that we can get to, you know, a budget that everybody hates. No, I'm kidding, but I think we can get to a budget that will meet at least the preliminary target that the board has set for us. So we will, we'll have to just do the best we can to get there. We have a couple of weeks to do that, we'll present the preliminary budget and preliminary levy to the county board at the September third meeting. Then you'll have a couple of weeks to sort of mull that over. And then, and then hopefully at the second meeting in September, you'll make a decision on that or make any adjustments and then a just, a decision. Just want to give you a reminder that the Beltrami County Health and Human Services offices are going to have limited service on Wednesday. Will not be closed, but they'll have limited service on Wednesday, August sixth, starting at about one PM for an employee in-service event. The second floor lobby is going to remain open for regular hours. The public health lobby will be closed at one PM and then reopen the following day at eight AM. So other than public health, there should be limited access during that day. So I just want to give you that, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
I have one question, Tom, does the three options, do any of them include childcare?
You know, we've actually talked about that, you know, what we might be able to do. You know, some joke that it's probably not great to put a bunch of youngsters in an ex-prison, you know, off to a great start kind of thing. The real problem comes with the license providers, right? So, yeah.
I was saying it somewhat facetiously, but anyhow, anybody have anything for your time, otherwise we'll adjourn. Good, we'll adjourn until five o'clock.